Hello, can anybody hear me?
Hi, Jeffrey, do you mind identifying yourself for the minutes?
Jeff Lacy, Schutzbury zoning board of appeals.
Thank you.
Hello, Jeff, Robert Raymond, good to, good to hear your voice.
Hi, Bob. Yeah, good to hear you too, and all the rest of you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Nathan.
Hello.
Hello.
Hey, Nathan.
What's going on?
Hey, Michael.
Hey there.
Hey, Michael.
Hey, Robert.
Okay, so we have Deacon Michael. Robert.
We got Jeff.
And yeah, we have Jeff. We have Jeff Weston?
No, the original one.
That's right.
Jeff Lacy.
He should get a T-shirt.
It's, it's seven oh one, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Schutzbury planning board to order. The meeting is being recorded here on Zoom. I'm on note, present, we have Deacon Bonner, myself, Nathan Murphy, Michael DeCiera, Robert Raymond, associate member Tom Seifer, the rural news clerk, Taupeng Gao. I don't see any other members of the board present, we do have a quorum of four members, so we're going to proceed with our scheduled public hearing. So this time, I will open the public hearing. And give me one moment. This public hearing is to consider three zoning bylaw amendments. These bylaws would, one, delete Article seven, rate of growth, which is obsolete. Two, update accessory dwelling unit regulations to comply with recent state statute. And three, add a new residential use for tiny houses currently allowed under Mass Building Code. The notice for this public hearing was run in a local newspaper pursuant to state law based on the requirements in the zoning act. And to start, I'm just gonna go through high level, the, each of the three items, and then we'll get more in depth after the high level review. I mentioned, oh, one of the things we're doing is removing Article seven, which is rate of growth. And this is more or less just a house cleaning item. The the language in that article is all tied in with specific dates, and these days have all passed, you know, this was put in a long time ago, I think. I don't recall the justification, but you know, the the reason for it has passed and none of the provisions are effective anymore. So just to reduce the size of the document we have, make it more readable and easier to navigate where we're taking it up. Another item that we have is adding a use for tiny homes and and some additional regulation around it, just to which more or less keeps it in line with some of the existing provisions in our bylaw. So to allow tiny homes in Schutzbury, we didn't need to do anything. But in doing so, the board thought that would, you know, one, create the visibility of it. So that, you know, if, you know, people aren't necessarily looking in the building code for things, but the, having it right there in our bylaw makes it, you know, kind of say, oh, yeah, I can build a tiny home in Schutzbury, right? And the, obviously, the other aspect of it is to add in some, some language which I'm gonna, I'm gonna read is gonna add into section four point four dash five, tiny houses. A tiny house is allowed out of Massachusetts Building Code and shall comply with the dimensions and specifications of the internal International Residential Code. Appendix Q is adopted by the Massachusetts Building Code. Tiny house may be a primary dwelling or an accessory dwelling unit and will comply with requirements according to this bylaw. A tiny home should be consistent with applicable local, state, federal requirements. There's a little bit more there, but mainly I want to read that tiny house shall a tiny house unit shall not be a recreational vehicle, commonly known as an RV, auto home, shipping container, motor vehicle, semi trailer, camper, or boat. A tiny home shall not be located upon a lot with a commercial or other non-residential use. And there shall be at least one parking space dedicated to use for the tiny home. There's also a definition in there which references the building code appendix and and some further information about the it's a tiny home with a maximum four hundred square feet of habitable living space excluding lost projections and from bay windows and open decks. And lastly, we have our amendment to accessory dwelling units, which the purpose of is to bring our bylaw into compliance with state statute. The state has something, you know, last year, the governor signed into law the Affordable Homes Act, which made accessory dwelling units allowed by right and which is called a protected a protected accessory dwelling unit. And there were certain changes that we needed to make to our bylaw in order to to do that. So with this one, Michael, would you like to share your screen with that and walk us through some of the recent changes? I guess, one more, I guess, before you do that, just a little bit more background on the accessory dwelling units amendment. The planning board met at the last meeting in March. And we voted to, you know, move for the a warrant article on these three items I've mentioned. And the version that for accessory dwelling units that was sent to the select board for that and posted on the website. Since then, Michael and I, you know, met with Donna, our town council, and I did some review of of our proposed amendment and also, you know, looked a little bit at some recent documents that came from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And we made some subsequent changes based on those discussions, which we'll also highlight tonight, basically just to try and simplify what we need to do in order to bring our bylaw into compliance with the statute and not create any potential legal issues therefore, with respect to that. So I'll let you go ahead, Michael, and please share and we'll get into that a little bit. And once, once Michael does his presentation, then we'll open it up for other comments and but from the public and board. You are muted.
Okay, can you guys see that? Okay? Cool. So the one other thing I'll just add based on what Nathan just said is after we talked to Donna, we were reminded by the, of the fact that the attorney general specifically offered pre-review to municipalities so that we could send it to them to make sure that it was compliant and we didn't have to send it in and then have them reject it and make changes. And we decided to take them up on the idea. We just got their feedback, oh, three hours ago, and they only had two small changes, so we made those changes, but you'll see from the beginning here, this, this accessory dwelling units sort of show up in different ways throughout our zoning bylaws, so there's multiple sections. The first two are just in the use table and the dimensional table, just changing the words. So they currently says accessory apartments. And we're changing to accessory dwelling units to comply and be consistent with the statute. So that's pretty straightforward. And in terms of the key, there's I simplified it because for the, you know, the planning board, we had various dates of changes. There's really two now. There's the red ones which are show that it's required by statute and the blue ones are things that we added that we wanted to make changes about, but they weren't required. So in the housing options, this is really mostly just wording. So we added that in addition to the current things, we wanted offer affordable housing to the entire range of residents while maintaining consistency of its zoning and the underlying values of the bylaw. So nothing substantively changing there, just sort of clarifying. And then the next line is that we included in the multifamily dwelling units, accessory dwelling units, the new language, modular dwelling units, which are not mobile homes and tiny houses, consistent with the fact that, you know, we're hoping that that passes as well. So the big section where ADUs get addressed is four point four dash two. So first change, change the language in the title of the section. Were required to have, this actually maybe should be red, I'm gonna make that red. So required to have one accessory dwelling unit allowable per residential lot. And we didn't change anything in terms of where it may be located, so it can be attached or it could be not attached. In terms of it can be part of a primary dwelling, it can be on the lot as an accessory structure, so that essentially stays the same. C was just, we added principal dwelling here to clarify. That's conclude, that addition to the accessory dwelling unit, the lot can have no more than one primary dwelling. It can have other accessories, so it can have, you know, it can have a primary dwelling, can have an ADU, can have a barn, can have a detached garage, that kind of stuff. But only one other primary dwelling. In terms of curb cuts, we wanted to make sure that there is no additional curb cuts permitted beyond what's allowed for a one-family dwelling. And the concept for those who are not on the planning board is that a lot of the regulation that came down with the law was that whatever process you require for a single-family residential home, you would have to require for an ADU. So a lot of this is if you allow it for a residential home, you need to allow it for an ADU. And so the same thing goes for number D, that we wouldn't, you can't do more than is allowed for a one-family dwelling unit. And we put it in May thirty first, two thousand twenty-five, because that's when town meeting is gonna be. So whatever's in place at that point. E is where the two comments by the attorney general came up, and these were mostly just clarifications. The way it works in statute is that if you are not in proximity of mass transit, so if you look at the bottom of that, so you're not a half a mile from a commuter rail, a subway station, a ferry terminal, or bus station, you can have requirement of only having one parking space for each, for each ADU that's put in. You can't require more than that. So the idea is not to make it exclusionary. And the attorney general just wanted to change the wording, said it was clear that, you know, if someone wanted to add more parking spaces, they could, but it's up to the owner to do that. And then at the end, they just said bus station apparently is broadly defined, and so you have to define it by that statute. But basically, the idea is if you have an ADU, you need to provide one parking spot for that ADU in addition to whatever is required for the actual primary dwelling unit. And then these are all, these blue things are all things that we added that are not statutory. So some, the black are already existing, so it has to follow state building code, it has to fire, all state fire code. We put explicitly, I mean, it's sort of a no-brainer, but we wanted to be explicit in this with the idea of making it user-friendly. It has to comply with Title V in terms of septic. It has to be approved by the Board of Health, which means that, so to get into the number, letter E, it has to have water, sewer, and electric service required by these bylaws for a primary dwelling. So the same idea. Whatever we require for a primary dwelling, you would require for an ADU. How that's achieved has to be up to snuff with the Board of Health. So we're not saying it has to be separate if there's, the house has capacity for, say, septic. And the Board of Health says it's sufficient, then it would pass muster. We added this G, which is just about public safety. So if you have an ADU, you need to have a reflective street address or appropriate identifying language, so if there's emergency crews, they know where to go. And this is, you know, if it's attached and, but it's like on a side entrance, or if it's detached, it's not readily apparent. Just to make it clear that people know where to go. The other thing that was significant that it passed the AG muster and hats off to Jeff Lacy for this one. We had a conversation, especially Nathan and I, following our conversation with Donna about compliance. And there's, there's, I would say, vagueness and lack of clarity in terms of if you want to build a primary residential house in Schutzbury, you have to comply with the setbacks. And in non-conforming situations, you know, where a house is on a non-conforming lot, the question was where do setbacks come into it? And can, can you, you can't deny it because it's by right, but can you have any input? And so what we came down with and talked to Donna and then the AG approved. And I think Donna got this idea from talking to Jeff Lacy, is that requiring site plan review by the ZBA. And the key thing that I think passes muster with the attorney general is this is in the guidance, the as-of-rate process. So basically, it's saying, we're gonna do a site plan review. It's for an as-of-rate building initiative, but the ZBA can have a conversation about, you know, we can't tell you no, but we can make recommendations to make it better. So you can't, if, if there are choices of two ways to put it, say, an ADU, whether attached or detached, the ZBA can say, well, you're allowed to do it, but we're gonna ask you to do it this better way as opposed to this worse way. So this is a gray area that I think we're all pretty confident from the conversation with Donna. We'll get clear in case law in subsequent so development over time, but for now, that, that passed muster. So it is invaluable that we got the AG to look at this. The other thing of worth noting is with our current bylaws, the driveways and common, and common driveways, if you had a common drive, the way it currently reads is that you can have no more than six lots on a common driveway. So that's what has been up until now. Donna pointed out that every primary dwelling can have an ADU. So if you assume one house with one ADU, those are six groups of people living in some kind of dwelling. And therefore, she suggested that we cut it down to three, with the idea being that if we still want to maintain a maximum of six, this is how we do that. So it just, it's all based on the premise that you have to allow an ADU for every primary dwelling. The last part is the definitions, which is in law, and it was again, nice to have the AG feel like we didn't have to repeat this in the body and that it was sufficient to be in the definitions. We put in the definition from the state on modular dwelling units, which is the terminology for, you know, things to get built in a factory somewhere and then plop down, so they're not, they're not mobile homes. And then lastly, Donna suggested that we have a severability clause so that if anything gets struck, which at this point, I don't think it would from the AG, the rest of it would stand intact. So that is the whole thing, and I'll leave this up if you have questions and want me to scroll to it. Thank you, Mike. It's all yours, Nathan.
All right. So at this point, I'd like to see if any of the any of the members of the public would like to submit testimony or make a comment on the proposed amendments.
Hi, it's Peter Gees, N E M T R.
Peter.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So I, I looked at the, the two versions and I was comparing the two and I I wanted to first just ask you for clarification. So the version three thirteen twenty-five, that, that got put away and replaced by the version three thirty? On three thirty twenty-five? Does, does the second version replace the first version, or is it an overlap?
Well,
I mean, for all intents and purposes, you know, we're you know, we're gonna drive towards that second version, that he you know, the purpose of the public hearing is, is to you know, notice the, the public about the amendments that the planning board is gonna propose to town meeting via, you know, warrant article. And so the text of the law, you know, the bylaw amendment would not be finalized until, you know, after the hearing is concluded and we can incorporate any testimony that we received from the hearing. Additionally, the, the only thing that we can incorporate into the final text of an amendment after the hearing has closed would be advice from legal counsel. So essentially, you know, we had the first draft up there. We had a conversation with town council and we made some changes based on that. And we wanted to put it on the website and put it out there so that people could see that. And, you know, have some understanding. And now we're talking about, you know, what we did. So the, the initial version out there had some changes in other sections of the bylaw pertaining to accessory dwelling, accessory structures and how the setback applies to it. There's also changes to section six point one of the Schutzbury zoning bylaw, which deals with alterations of non-conforming structures and uses. And you know, essentially, what we decided is that we don't need to make any changes to either of those sections in order to come into compliance with state law. And in doing so, it, it, it kind of boxes in in a way which had the potential to kind of put us in some you know, put us in a situation, situation we don't want to be in. So what we, and also the other, the other big change was that in the initial version of it, we had accessory dwelling units allowed by right in all districts. Now they're, they're, you know, we left it as it is currently allowed by site plan review. So now what happens is with some of these, you know, more kind of complicated questions that come up with this new law and with the regulations that have been you know, the, the law that was passed provides for the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to promulgate regulations that administer the provisions of that law. And they did so, and there's you know, so that's, you know, the, the statute itself consisted of about two paragraphs. There's a definition in the zoning act, and then there's a, a paragraph that went into section three of chapter forty-eight, which is the zoning act, which deals with zoning exemptions. which is the zoning act, which deals with zoning exemptions. That's things like like schools and churches and child, you know, childcare facilities, solar are all notable exemptions that are covered under, under section three. So the newest addition there now is accessory dwelling units. And in addition to that, we have these regulations that, and they highlight things like the statute provides that you know, it's allowed by right, provided that the municipality may impose reasonable regulations and restrictions. And then, you know, further in the language that is in the goes into section three, it notes, you know, dimensional setbacks and things like that. So the regulations expand on that more and they say things like you can impose regulations on setbacks. Now, if you have a accessory dwelling unit that's being added, what, what the setback, you know, can't be, it would be unreasonable if it was, they say you have to look at the the setback requirements for whatever the principal dwelling is, which maybe a single family home, maybe a two family home, right? Whatever that is. Or you have to look at what a single family home is, or you have to look at what the setback requirements are for an accessory dwelling unit. Or I'm sorry, for what the setbacks are for an accessory structure. And for the protected use accessory dwelling, you have to use the most permissive setbacks in the district for any of those three items I just mentioned, which is the the principal dwelling, the single family residential home, whether or not that is the principal dwelling, and whatever setbacks you have for accessory structures. So those are the kinds of things that we're dealing with. The, the regulations notably also state that you cannot deny an application for a protected use accessory dwelling unit based on non-conformance. Right? So what does that mean? Right? It's just some of these things, you know, have some questions that are difficult to answer until it goes through a, a legal process where somebody says, you know, somebody sues and says, hey, you know, I should have been allowed to do this, or maybe someone else sues and said they should not have allowed them to do that, so on and so forth. And it goes through the courts and you get, you know, the court makes decisions, it becomes case law and you get a little bit more clarity than we have now. Now leaving it as a site plan review alleviates us from having to deal with some of those questions from a bylaw perspective. And it puts it on our zoning board of appeals, which is why earlier Michael kind of gave a shout out to Jeff Lacy over there, but so when we get an application for an accessory dwelling unit, it will go to the zoning board of appeals and, and that body has the authority to evaluate any legal questions that come with the application and rule based on the findings that they make.
Okay. I mean, that, that all, all that makes sense. I, when, when this came out, I was already monitoring it as, as it had been initially thrown out there by the governor and then throughout the whole process and the public comment process portion of it. There was one aspect here that I noticed between the two versions of adjustments here. And I know that the original zoning bylaws had a, had a a statute in there that the distance between the primary dwelling and the accessory dwelling in the original zoning bylaws was a maximum of seventy five feet. And then I noticed in the in the, the first version that you put forth on three thirteen that it quoted in section under conditions four point two dash two.
There's a hundred feet.
Five at the very bottom, five triple I within a new sex accessory structure located on the side, the same lot and no more than one hundred feet separate from the principal dwelling. Then I noticed in the new version, there's no there's nothing to that effect mentioned. So I wanted to get clarification on that. I had extensively read the new A D U law probably five, six times. I mean, really read it over and over and over again, looking for some language that was in there that set a restriction between the two buildings. And the only thing I could see in there was that it couldn't be more restrictive than for a a single family dwelling such as side lot setback and then all the requirements of Title V and you know, accessibility, safe accessibility. So I wanted to find out, I'm kind of curious here in this new version, because there's no mention of it. My interpretation of the new A D U law, there is nothing that specifies or says that you can't have a greater distance between the two units, the two.
Thank you, Peter. Well, yeah, I was just going to say, Michael, you know, we took out that provision, I think, because there was just some concern that it might not hold muster when it goes to the Attorney General for legal review. And, and that may or may not be true. I can't advise you one way or the other, Peter, because you know, the purpose of this public hearing is for us to receive you know, feedback from you, the public and whoever else is, is here, whether it's, you know, members from other boards in town, like Jeff Lacy, for example, right? We're hoping to hear your your comments on, on these matters to inform the planning board. When we, after, you know, when we close the hearing and, and we finalize the language of the amendments that are actually going to go before the town, annual town meeting. If you have anything to add, please do.
Yeah, I was just going to give just a little context. So Peter, you're right. You know, the current one's a seventy five feet. The first version was a hundred feet and then it has none. And that was on advice of counsel, just as Nathan said that it was, it's not clear if municipalities are allowed to put that in there. So we were trying to, the goal of this whole effort was to comply with the new state law and get it passed, you know, and then the other context I was just going to provide is there's three sort of touch points in this process is the statute, which Nathan appropriately said is very short. Then there's the regulations, which are a bit longer. And then they came out with a model set of a model bylaw. And reviewing that with Donna, it was clear that there's inconsistencies between those three documents. So we're trying to thread the needle and make sure that the lowest common denominator passes muster and still feels okay for the town. But the starting point, although one would assume statute is the starting point, the regulations of the model bylaws really muddy the waters. And so that's on advice of counsel, we remove the, the distance between the two structures.
Okay. I mean, it makes sense because there, there's nothing in the A D U bylaw that, that puts that forth, that, that, that can be a restriction. I think the verbiage was it can't be any more restrictive than for a for the primary residence. So whatever you set up restrictions for the primary residence, you you can't make it any more restrictive for the A D U.
And you can't have a distance from the primary distance. If you're a primary residence, there's no distance between that in itself. So that's the conundrum.
Yeah. So just to give a little bit of clarity, Peter, you're talking about setback requirements from lot lines, right? Or a side lot line. And that's, that's what the
I'm actually talking Nate, I'm actually talking about the distance between the two units themselves. I, I
Understood, understood. But, but in the, in the regulations in the, in the, in the statute, it doesn't say anything about the distance between principal, right? It doesn't say anything about that. It, it just talks about that your, your setback requirements, you know, cannot be more restrictive than any of those three items, right? Yeah. So, so, so it's not addressed in there. And you know, on that regard, we, we said, all right, well, we don't have a really good way to tell if if a, a maximum distance between the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit could be considered an unreasonable regulation. So that was the motivation for us taking that out. Now, do you have any further comment, Peter?
No, I, I think that was one of the ones that just jumped out at me. So I think
Thank you very much for your comments today, Peter. Appreciate it. Does any other member of the public have any comment they would like to provide?
This is Jeff Lacy. I, I guess I'm now the public. Well, yeah. Well, I don't know what I am, but I, I have quite a few.
But yeah, let's please, I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. I'm not versed in this. If you ask me to about Conway's, I could recite it to you verbatim without looking at it, but I, I've just came up to speed with this recently. I'm, I'm working off of a three thirty twenty five version. In my version, I don't see anything about tiny houses. I, I see a mention of it in housing options, but no other reference to tiny houses. So I I don't think I got that part.
Uh, yeah, that's a, that's an interesting point, Jeff. You know, there is a a mention of tiny houses and the, we have a separate document for the tiny houses amendment.
Okay. Well, I, I won't comment on that because I haven't read it. I, I think it's a good thing. But I, I guess the question, my question would be why, what's the purpose of limiting, limiting it to four hundred square feet? Is, is that to keep them under four? I mean, what if you have a five hundred one? What's the, what are the implications?
It's, it's the international standard, which is now incorporated into the mass standard. So it's the definition for a tiny house.
So that's the tiny house that appendix Q applies to?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So
If it was five hundred feet, it just wouldn't be a tiny house and then you would have to apply to other building code provisions that are applicable to just principal dwellings or, or, or you know, dwellings in general, I guess.
Okay. So four, so four hundred square feet is a threshold below which there are different standards. Okay. All right. So let me just go down here and I'll try to make it. I'll, I'll try to make it quick. Four point four dash two A. It says one accessory dwelling unit is allowable per residential lot. I would substitute residential lot with the words any lot with a principal dwelling. Because principal dwelling can be primarily a commercial structure. Actually, doesn't have to be a residential. As long as it has one dwelling unit in it somewhere. So anyway, that's, I, I would substitute residential lot for any lot with a principal dwelling. Because the principal dwelling is what triggers the ability to do a protected use A D U.
Right. Yeah, it could be a mixed use building.
Yeah. So all right. So now moving on to the next section. Okay, the, the hundred foot, the hundred foot offset max to to the principal dwelling. I, I am in dialogue with the Attorney General about this and with Donna. I think you can do it. I think the statute allows you to do it. And where the regs elaborate on the statute, they go too far. Because the regs, the, the statute, well, never mind the rationale behind it. I'll argue that with the A G. But anyway, I'm keeping it in Conway and I'm using the hundred feet. The, the hundred foot is unrelated to any normal setbacks that would attend to a single family dwelling or a two family dwelling. So it's not like it's in excess of any existing standard that you have. It's an entirely unrelated standard. Applies uniquely to A D Us. And the way I did it in Conway, I built a waiver into it. So if the site kind of dictates that it needs to be over a hundred feet, then you can apply for a waiver. And I borrowed some of the old Schutzbury waiver language out of something that we had done, I think solar. So that's the way I'm trying to run with it in Conway. And my attitude is leave it in there if you really want it and leave it to the A G to strike it. You have a severability clause. And if they strike it, it won't hurt the rest of the bylaw. They'll just take that part out for you.
Jeff, did you get feedback from the H E about that one?
No, I asked her some hard questions about it today and you know, I, I got, I got my Conway one back today as well. And I read it and then I emailed back to Donna and and Margaret with those questions and I haven't gotten an answer yet. I, I think they're very hard questions to answer, frankly. So I, I'm, I'm leaving it in Conway for now because I, I, I think it's a valuable provision. I don't think A D U should be scattered any, anywhere and everywhere around a parcel. New England design standard is compact. And you know, we did this originally so that the A D U would be in the same yard, pretty much, although somewhat away from the principal dwelling, but not in its own separate yard that has to be all dug up and and the trees cut and everything else. So we have a good rationale for it. I'm sticking with it.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
So when the A G sent you, sent back the letter today that prompted the hard questions, had they advised against keeping that provision in? Or did they, you know, did they comment on it disfavorably?
They said it might be deemed unreasonable. Because it's different or in excess of standards that relate to the principal dwelling. But it's actually an entirely different standard that doesn't relate to a principal dwelling. It relates only to the relationship between the principal dwelling and the A D U. There's no comparable standard for principal dwelling that you're exceeding with this.
Can you send the language, Jeff, just so we have it?
Uh, yeah. I, I will. You mean the, the A G's language?
No, no, no. The, the waiver language that you, I mean, it's, I can just dig it up for the solar, but if if it's easy to cut and paste, that'd be great to just have it. Why do you put in that for that thing?
I'll, 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 I'll tell you what it, I'll tell you what it says. It says detached, I call them P O W D U's. Protected use A D Us may be located within a garage barn or accessory structure in existence on June seventh, two thousand and twenty five, or within a new accessory structure located within a hundred feet of the principal dwelling. Upon written request by the applicant, the planning board may waive or increase the hundred foot separation requirement by the same majority vote required for the site plan approval upon findings included in the permit of one, special circumstances of the site, its surroundings or the proposed design that negate the need for imposition of the requirement, or the objectives of this section may be met in an alternative manner. And two, that such a waiver or reduction does not derogate from the public purposes and intent of this zoning bylaw. I, I, I almost took that.
Yeah, it sounds very familiar.
It does. We've, we've seen it many times. Yes. So thank you, Schutzbury for that. But anyway, that's my comment. And you know, I strongly believe A D U should not be scattered all over the place that that we don't need to be creating whole new clearings in the forest to put these in. So anyway, if, if I hear things about this in my dialogue with Margaret and Donna, I will let you guys know.
Thank you. Jeff, is that, is that all you have for comments on this?
No.
Okay.
Okay, now we go down to D. It says, no additional curb cuts or driveway access shall be permitted. But you know, for a detached A D U, especially if it's often in the middle of the back forty of some piece of property, is probably going to need additional driveway access. Right? Because you've got a driveway that comes in to serve the principal dwelling and then presumably the detached A D U is out in the back somewhere. It could be a long ways away. You need to have vehicular access to it. So I wouldn't say driveway access. I would just say curb cuts. So anyway, for, for, for that reason, because probably in many of those cases, you will, they, they will have to construct additional driveway. And then that sentence goes along and says permitted beyond that allowed for a one family dwelling. Well. A principal dwelling can be, um, any structure with, with at least one dwelling in it. Uh, can also be a two family dwelling, a three family dwelling, it could be the four family dwelling right at the, at, at the end of, um. Of, um, Pelham Hill Road right across, that's a four family, that's eligible for an ADU.
Yeah, we, we did change the language, I think we just missed this one.
Okay, so, so I had to guess allowed for the principal dwelling. Permitted beyond that allowed for the principal dwelling instead of saying sync one family dwelling.
Good catch.
The next one. Let's see. The, the next one E, it says the lot shall have a minimum of one off-street parking space.
Actually, we changed it today, Jeff, based on, uh, the AG's language, I can read it to you since you're on the phone, you want me to do that?
Yeah.
It says, this is partly her language in the beginning. Only one off-street parking space for dedicated use by the accessory dwelling unit is required. In addition to the required parking for principal dwelling. But more may be, may be provided the applicant's option, so that's basically Margaret's suggestion for language. Um, then it says this may include internal garage bays.
Yeah.
No, no additional parking space should be required for accessory dwelling units in terms of the distance for, um. Commuter rail, subway, ferry, bus station as defined by seven sixty CMR seven one dot O two.
Okay, that, that last part. You know, the, the regulations, um. The regulations exist and will con- control this, but since there's absolutely no chance that there'll ever be a. Ferry terminal or bus station or subway or rail station in shoots berry, you could probably just whip that right out of there.
No, Donna told us to put it in there explicitly because she said she was getting feedback that. Even though we know that, we have to state that we're not near anything and that's why we're doing it. Cause the original version didn't have it in there and she requested we put it in just to make clear where we are and why we're doing it.
So that's, so the AG not being familiar with shoots berry, um.
They, they might think we're Shrewsbury, you never know.
Okay, yeah, they may have one, all right, all right, no problem. The next one is F E. Water sewer and electric service as required by these bylaws for a primary dwelling. I'm, I'm wondering whether this means that. You know, the words as required for a primary dwelling, does that mean that the ADU has to have its own well, its own septic system, its own. Uh, separate utility connection?
That's not the intent.
Okay, because the most practical way to do these is to hook them in. Hook them into the existing septic system or the. Septic system that's gonna be redesigned and rebuilt so that the principal dwelling and the ADU. Don't have to have a separate well, septic and, and, and utilities. Right, so just making sure that that doesn't imply that you need a separate set of all that for your ADU, which would make.
If it was, I think if it was intended to do that, it'd probably be an unreasonable regulation just because of cost.
Yeah, yeah, um, I, I've heard this debated in the different webinars, but I'm not sure exactly what. How, how they came out on it, um. So, all right. Um, let's see. In the, in the definition section, um, I added a few more to the Conway bylaw. I added gross floor, and these are taken directly from the regulations, the, um. EO HLC regulations, I added a definition of gross floor area. So everybody's, um, um. Firm on how to calculate that, the one in the shoot spray bylaws is a little different, like it's floor area and it's not exactly the same. So. Um, I, I took that definition, a definition of principal dwelling, so it's clear that it's, it's not just a single family dwelling. I, I, um. Took a definition of protected use ADU. And single family residential district. Cause I, I, I felt while those are not all the definitions in the regulations, they're the ones that might. Be handy for people using the Conway bylaw. So gross floor area, principal dwelling, protected use ADU and single family residential zoning district.
You just added definitions in the definition section for those is what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay, that's good to know.
And. Then, let's see. Modular dwelling unit, that's, that's fine, that, that sort of covers some tiny homes, cause I guess if you had a. Modular dwelling unit on wheels, you could, um, you could wheel it in, but then put it on a foundation and it would qualify as a. Potentially as a tiny housing unit, right? So that, that sounds fine. And the, the only other thing, the last thing, the severability is, you know, we have a global severability in the bylaw already. So we don't need one in each section. So you, you could get rid of that, you'd be fine.
Yeah, Donna said we should put it in, so we, it's figured it didn't hurt.
Belt and suspenders, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Well.
Yeah. I'd like to just. Ask you a few questions about, um, since you're very familiar with the, the statute, the regulations and a lot of the. Things that go around this, right, so. In, in the, in the regulations that it says that you can have setback requirements for. Accessory dwelling units. You, you know, protected use accessory dwelling units, right, so if. If the zoning board of appeals were to, you know, get an application for an accessory dwelling unit. And, and deny it because it was not, you know, the, the, the plans that were submitted show that the. That the structure for the accessory dwelling unit was not within, uh, you know, violated the. The setback dimensional requirements. Uh, so if, if the zoning, if a zoning board of appeals for any town for that matter, right, were, were to deny a site plan review application for a protected use ADU. Um, do you think that there is, uh. Anything in the statute or, or regulations that says that, that, um. Or rather, with that. Go outside of the definition of an as of right process?
Well, as of right process is now. Whether it's as of right, go directly to the building inspector or as of right, go first to the planning board or zoning board for site plan review. There's two different ways to do it, site plan adds a little bit of, um, regulatory involvement. In either case, if the project does not meet the, the basic dimensional requirements, you know, the, um. Um, the numeric requirements in the bylaw, um, it's okay to deny it.
Okay.
That's, that's the way it is now with a buy right or a buy right and spec, and site plan review process. I mean, why have the damn things if you can't enforce it?
Okay, thank you, and, uh. Now, in the. In the regulations, I believe it, it is where it speaks to the question of non-conforming lots, you know, and, and non-conforming structures. Uh, and that, that sort of thing, and it says that, uh. You know, you can't deny an application for protected use ADU based on, on non-conformance.
That's, that is a murky water, um. Section six of the zoning act, non-conformities is, is murky to begin with. I think what that says is you can't turn away an ADU application. Or, or deny it, um, on its face because the, the lot or the existing principal dwelling is non-conforming. You have to entertain it. Beyond that, um, I, I'm, I'm, I have to admit, I'm not sure. And I think that's why we have courts.
Okay. Fair enough, all right, I think, uh.
But that, but that's gonna be a zoning board of appeals problem, because we do the non-conforming stuff all the time. And, and we do these, so you, you guys don't have to worry about that.
Well, I mean, we do because we're, you know, trying to figure out this bylaw, but, uh, you know, once, once the bylaws, you know, we don't have to worry about it from an application perspective.
Yeah. But. I, I, I have, I have heard no. Fine, well. I, I, I don't, I've read through that model bylaw and I don't even know if they deal with it in there, that model ADU bylaw, um.
They make mention of it, they even suggest that you could potentially exempt ADUs from that requirement.
From the, from the, the.
From the section six finding requirement.
The finding requirement, yeah, yeah.
Which to me, which seems very strange to me that they would go so far as to suggest you might exempt. You know.
Yeah.
This from that portion of state statute.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, okay, um.
You know, generally, a- as things get more and more non-conforming. The lots get smaller, the, the setbacks are often not met. Uh, there's very limited, uh, opportunity to do things on a lot. And plopping a detached or even attached ADU on a lot becomes more and more difficult. As the lots get smaller. You're gonna have no trouble in shoots berry with, you know, your, your larger lots, your two acre lots. But down at the lake, figuring out how to get these in, that's gonna be really tough. You know, without, without being, um, detrimental to the neighborhood. I, I, I think it's just gonna be harder, so. So I don't know, um. We're, we're gonna do these case by case in, in the ZBA and. Maybe there'll be some guidance from other towns or from the courts.
Okay. Well, uh. Yeah, thank you, thank you, Jeff, for all your comments.
You're welcome, it's good hearing y'all voices again.
Same. Is there anyone else, uh, you know, a member of the public that would like to make a comment? I'm hearing none.
Yes, uh, Peter with N E M T R again. It's, it's not so much as a comment, but a question, Jeff mentioned something. And, uh, he said something about a, a four family unit, uh, being allowed to have an ADU, could you clarify that?
Sure, uh, what the regulations, uh, say is that. Uh, any principal dwelling can, you know, add an ADU by right. Uh, and so the, the principal dwelling, uh, is any. Structure that exists on a lot in a residential district that has at least one. Uh, at least one residential dwelling in it. Right, so that could be a, a four family, multifamily, uh. Residential structure, it could be a duplex, it could be a, uh, top floor apartment, right, with a store underneath and apartment above. Uh, so it could be any variation of that, as long as the structure has at least one residential unit in it. Or residential dwelling in it, then, uh, it can be a principal dwelling. And this protected use ADU is, uh, allowed. Um, providing it, you know, doesn't violate other provisions in the bylaw or state statute.
All right, well, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, even a large commercial, uh, building that has. One apartment that might be designed for a, you know, a caretaker or something, uh, that now becomes a principal dwelling. Because it has that one unit in it.
Okay. Uh, any other comments from any, anyone, um?
May I chime in here, Nathan, or?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna go next to, to the board and see if.
Oh, I wasn't sure which category you're on, so.
But, yeah, yeah, um, go ahead, Tom.
Thanks, um, first of all, is this even the right time during the hearing to address something like a, a rogue S? Or a missing S or a capitalization, or aren't those things to be talked about now, but later?
No, I, I would say not, I, I would, uh, look for more, um. Yeah, I mean, cause we can, we can, we'll go through and, yeah, deal with any dramatic and stuff, yeah, um.
Thank you, okay, all right, that's all I wanted.
Um, yeah, any, uh, any comments from the board or questions from the board?
We're gonna move to the other two as well, right, we're just doing ADUs right now, trying to close that one out.
Well, no, I mean, you know, um. I, 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 I thought, uh, people could make a comment on any, uh, section, I think we did.
I'll pull it up if people have questions then.
What's that?
If someone has a question on the, the other two, I can, I can pull it up.
Well, so I'll just, I'll just go back to everyone in the public and, you know, say, you know, obviously the conversation is primarily focused on ADUs, it's the. It's the more complex of the three proposals that, uh, we're putting forward. But just in case anyone had any questions or comments about any of the other two, which is the removal of. Rate of development and the, um. Putting in, uh, the provisions for, uh, tiny houses, does anyone have any comment on that, that didn't already, uh? Didn't have comment on that and thought we were only talking about ADUs previously? No. Okay, um.
Comment or maybe a question, but is, is there, is there any language that addresses? Whether if you, if you have a lot and you already have a tiny house on it. And, and then, uh, you say, okay, well, I'd like to, I'd like to have a house and an ADU. And the tiny house would pass as the ADU. Uh, could you then submit for a pri- a new primary residence on the lot as long as you meet all the criteria?
So. Say you start off with a, with a tiny house on a lot, so it's just a one lot with a tiny house and then you wanna build. Like a full, you know. Four bed.
Something I would have as a much larger, something larger than the ADU, you know, as like a standard house. Can you do, it, we're doing it backwards now, you know, you have, the, the ADU law basically addresses, you have a primary residence. And you wanna add a small apartment, if you have a home that passes as a small apartment, then you have enough land and area. Can you then say, well, I'm now in a better financial position, can I put up a, a larger house? And, and have the, what was considered the primary house, considered now the ADU?
It, it feels like it's a hypothetical, that would be a whole other meeting or two. Because when you build a tiny house, it is a primary dwelling, even if it's a small primary dwelling. So. I don't know. I mean, I, I would, being that we have other things on the agenda, I wouldn't spend the time on it right now, but.
Yeah, we can't.
I think you have to reverse the status and I don't know how one reverses the status.
You can't answer that question.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's fine, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else? No, I just, I just have a couple of comments I would like to make regarding the, uh, accessory dwelling units. You know, and, and talking about, you know, dimensional requirements, you know, I'd like to state that. Yeah, I do agree with Jeff, I don't think that there's anything in the statute or the regulations that would, you know, preclude the town from, uh, you know. Uh, essentially rejecting, uh, an application to build an ADU based on, um. The setback requirements from, from lot lines. Re- regarding. The issue of non-conformance, you know, uh. We, we've noted that this kind of muddies the waters, um. Uh, there's another consideration that hasn't really been brought up, which is. It, it says that a special permit shall not be required to, uh, to build a, an accessory dwelling unit. And. We keep talking about section, chapter forty-eight, section six. And what that section, uh, says is that, you know, basically. Among many other things, it says if you have, you know, existing uses. Or buildings that come out of conformance, right, you know, you're, you're not allowed to. Or buildings that come out of conformance, right? You know, you're, you're not allowed to. You know, reconstruct them, um, or expand those uses, right? And, and then it says that if you have a, um. A single family or two family residential str- you know. Um, residential structure that is non-conforming, um, you can. Do alterations or, um. You know, uh, extensions on it, as long as it doesn't increase the non-conforming nature, right? And that, and, and we have a lot about this in our, in our bylaw now. Um, and it says that, uh, if you, if it does, uh, increase the non-conformance, that you can't do that unless there's a finding made by the. Permit granting authority or special permit granting authority. Okay? All right, and, and our Schutzbury zoning bylaw. We put that on the special permit granting authority. And know, and, and make it a special permit that would be issued by the zoning board of appeals to, um. To make that finding as to whether or not any increase in non-conformity is, uh, detrimental to the neighborhood, right? So, uh, by extension of the requirements for except protected use accessory dwelling units, the. You know, there, there, there. I- if it involved these, the, um. Alterations that fall into this category requiring a, a finding under section six. Uh, could that be a special permit, right? You know, and a lot of, uh, people are saying, you know, no, it could not be, um. That may be debatable because, you know, the, the special permit is not for an ADU. The special permit is for. Uh, expanding the non-conformity of a single family or two family, uh, residential structure for section six. Uh, whether or not they say that that violates the statute or regulations for an ADU, um, I don't know. But that's why we didn't add ADUs to section six point one of our bylaw, which has that special permit requirement. Uh, you know, it's just a, um. It, it, it's a site plan review that goes to the zoning board of appeals and. Part of the findings that could be made is for that, uh, site plan review approval could be, you know, the, the, you know, they, the zoning board of appeals could, uh. Decide how to do that and, uh. And, and that's, that's essentially where, you know, we've left it, um. I, I also wanted to state that. I don't think that just because a ADU is on a nor- non-conforming lot. That, you know, I, I kind of interpret that to mean. If it's in, if you're do- if you're converting exist- existing space on a non-conforming lot or non-conforming structures. Uh, you can do that, right? That falls under alterations you can do by right, cause you're not in- increasing the non-conforming nature. But if you have a, a single family residence, that's your principal dwelling. And it's on a non-conforming lot and. And you wanna build a, a new, a new accessory structure to have an accessory dwelling in it. If it doesn't meet the setbacks, I think you can still reject it. It's not for non-conformity. It's for. It's for the requirement to comply with setbacks. That is a regulation that's allowed by statute and, and the regulations. Uh, that's, that's how I see it. And that's what, what I want to provide is my testimony, uh, in this public hearing. I see Michael, uh, would like to speak also.
As would I. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just aware of time, cause we've got. The special permit thing that we have to do, um, and I feel like we're sort of relitigating some stuff. I mean, I appreciate the comment. Um, I guess I would just share that, like, what we talked about was. Treating this bylaw just like we did the solar, that if we pass this, it passed busters, it gets updated and it's compliant. And then next year. If there's any clarity in all this stuff, we can always revisit some of the things that, you know, we can take multiple bites at an apple as it evolves. But just getting this from not compliance to compliance is really the big thing and trying to get some things in, um. But I think following on the conversation with Donna, we should just stay away from the whole non-conformity thing because it's a quagmire and. If we get rejected because of that, even if with severability, it's just not worth doing right this second. And I think to Jeff's earlier point, if someone wants to do it on a lot in the lake and it's not conforming, it's gonna be really hard to do. So I don't think it's an urgent thing that we have until, you know, at least next year to sort of revisit tweaking. Um, so I just don't want to spend two hours discussing this and then start the special permit at, you know, nine o'clock or something. So I'm concerned about that.
No, no, I, I mean, Michael, I just wanted to, you know, I'm, I'm just putting that on the public record as, you know, the way that I'm seeing. How this works, you know, I don't think that there's anything in the statute or in the language we're adding to our bylaw that precludes, um. Ba- basically I was saying, you know, what we're doing here, I don't think is, the result is going to be that people are going to be able to put ADUs. Um, like five feet from the lot line because it's a protected use. That's not what the statute says. That's my, that's my testimony on the hearing, right? I think it's important. All right.
Nate, could I, th- this is Jeff. Could I just add quickly on the non-conforming issue?
Yes.
There, there are probably three different ways it can go. Imagine a lake lot. If the ADU is entirely internal to the structure, even if the structure is non-conforming. It's entirely internal, it probably will not increase the non-conforming nature. So that is, is not a problem. If it's detached, then it, it's not the, the, the principles. It's not the. The non-conforming structure you're doing anything to. It's a whole separate one. So then you just look at the setbacks and. And you evaluate it. The time when it, you do get this, this overlap. Is say a bump out of the principal dwelling. You know, you're, you're, you're bumping it out to the side. You're decreasing the setback. Um, you're adding something like that. That's when those two will. Will, you know, the by right nature of the ADU versus the special permit requirement that we have, that's when they'll bump up against each other.
Right.
You know, probably just in that one circumstance.
And do you think that the, uh? The language that more or less that we're proposing, leaving it with site plan review by the zoning board of appeals will give the zoning board of appeals the. Necessary flexibility to address that situation if it should arise?
I guess so. I mean, whether we'd send them off to, you know, to submit a, a special permit. Uh, along with their site plan review, um, I, I think that needs further ca- um, clarification. Um.
Right.
Maybe, maybe some, uh, some court cases or something, um, or some further guidance. Somebody, but I don't know the answer to it. I, I. You know, right now, what you'd probably do is do both. Do a, you know, a special permit to, uh, talk about the, um. You know, the effects on the neighborhood and then you just apply your, your, uh, ADU standards in a by right manner through the site plan review. And you'd have to get through both of them.
Well, let me ask the question another way. You know, there's nothing that we're proposing that would, uh, you know, inhibit the zoning board of appeals from making. The determination, uh, if that situation should arrive, uh, as to how to proceed.
No, you, you're, you're, you're not.
Okay, thank you.
You're fine.
All right, I think, you know, that wraps it up. Is there anyone else that has any, anything they need to add? Okay, that's, uh, great. Do we wanna talk about any, um? Any tweaks that we're gonna make on, uh, feedback tonight before we, uh, close this up and move on to the special permit? Yeah, I saw you highlighting a few things, uh, Michael, yeah?
Yeah, give me one second. I'll pull it back up, um. You can all see that, okay?
Yep.
So I think. I mean, well, one thing I learned at the, the workshop that Jeff and Lacy and I attended at the systems planning is that we can. Keep the hearing open so that we can discuss it at a subsequent meeting if we want. We don't have to close this today, but just in a short version, um. My sense is Jeff's recommendations about changing the language from residential to any lot with a per- principal dwelling. In four point four dash two A makes sense, um. In D, getting rid of the driveway access, that was a good, I think that's a reasonable. Understanding that, you know, the issue really is curb cuts unless about driveway access. And if they need driveway access, that's sort of gonna have to do it. Otherwise they're driving. They're making a driveway access by driving over stuff that's not an, an access point, um, and then change.
Do those gonna strike, uh, or driveway access and change one family to principal dwelling?
Yeah, that's what I would think.
You wanna just do that right now or?
Um, if everyone's okay with it, I.
Uh, yeah, I mean, you know, I think we should just kinda like this, like, there's just a few small tweaks and then we can just make it and probably vote, right? Or I don't know, well, we can talk about it, but we'll just get that done. And I mean, I also wanna just kinda cover that, uh, question of, uh. Uh, seventy-five, a hundred feet or, or no, uh, restriction on the, uh, the distance, um.
Yeah.
You know, right now we have it with no, uh, with nothing in there. Uh, so I'm just gonna ask, you know, if anyone, uh, feels like we really should put something back in there. I'm hearing that. Okay, we can just leave it.
Oh, sorry, this is Ashley. It took me a minute. I like the idea of putting the hundred feet back in there.
You do, okay.
I think Jeff's point of trying to keep, you know, less forest clearing from happening. Makes sense for our town and just not having them sort of spread all about.
Right, right, um. I guess, you know, our, our, our. You know, you could, you could go either way, right? Obviously it makes sense to have, uh, some sort of limit there because, you know, like, you know, we don't wanna have like two sort yards for it per se. Um, on the other hand, uh. You know, this could introduce us, you know, it introduces a little bit of risk, cause we don't know what's gonna happen in terms of whether or not this is gonna be viewed as a reasonable regulation. Uh, you know, the other thing that, you know, in my assessment of it is, the further away you put it from the house, the more money is gonna cost to hook up. Septic and water. Um, so, uh. You know, you could have, you know, a really wealthy individual or developer that wants to have this kind of two yard situation is gonna take advantage of that and. You know, I mean, I don't think that's, uh, that big a deal. I don't think it's gonna happen a lot. I think in most cases, uh, people are gonna do this in existing structures. Or they're gonna do it, um, you know, it, you know, within the, uh. You know, pretty close to the house so that it can, you know, minimize the cost, um, but. I'm, I'm, I don't, you know, feel overly strong about it one way or another. I don't know if, uh, anyone, if anyone else wants to add it, you know, now's the time to speak up. Otherwise we're gonna, I think, let it go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm mixed on it. I mean, I think Jeff's point makes sense and I think the ra- original rationale of limiting distance makes sense. I'm sort of inclined, given that it wo- it would be more expensive to pass this this year and then sort of. Take another review of it next year and see between now and then. I mean. It's really clear from multiple people that the regulations. Don't really tie directly to the statute and the model bylaw. There's just a lot of confusion. So, you know, this law got passed a few months ago, it's sort of a, a, a dash to get it written. So I don't think we're gonna have a whole bunch of ADUs built between now and next year's town meeting. So I think we can pass this and then revisit it. Cause I think we should treat it like we did the solar one where we get clarity as we go forward. But I, I think though, it's a very legitimate point and I think. I'd like to sort of put it in. It's just a question of, do we do it now? Um, I mean, Jeff's point about having the severability clauses exactly for that reason, that they can strike it, um. So there's nothing bad. It's like, you know, it's, we've gotten whacked by the AG so many times, like, maybe it's just sort of. Now wanting to get whacked and sail through, um, but I can go either way.
Well, if, uh, Ashley, if you wanna make a motion, we can, uh, we can vote on it. Or if you, if you don't care to make a motion, then we'll just move on as is.
I think it's. I'm not gonna make a motion. I would say let's move on as is and revisit it.
Perfect.
If we get a whole bunch of them built in the next year and they're all three hundred feet from somebody's house and they're clearing forests, then we can revisit.
Absolutely, okay. Sounds good to me, um. Was there anything else that, uh, kinda was highlighted, um, within our discussion that we need to, uh?
Um. There was adding the, the definitions. I think that needs a little bit. I mean, I think this passes muster now. It's not gonna, all those, in my opinion. Adding those definitions is helpful for people's understanding, but it's not essential. It won't change anything since it's in statute already.
Yeah, and, uh, it was, um, yes, already in statute, um. Yeah, I, I don't think that's, I mean, you know, you could add, uh. And we, we could just say, uh, do we wanna add the, uh, uh, principal dwelling, um? Just, you know, kinda rip it right out of the, uh, uh, regulations, which is, um. You know, the structure, regardless of whether it or the lot is situated on and conforms to zoning, including the re- uh, requirements, the dimensional requirements. Such as setbacks, bulk height. Uh, that contains at least one dwelling unit and is or will be located on the same lot as a protected use ADU. All right, so should we, uh? Um, I mean, I, I don't really care actually. I mean, if anyone wants to add it, I mean. No, all right, uh, I think, uh. And then the severability, uh, Michael, um. Right now, this is just kinda like floating out there, uh. It's kinda technically in the definition section.
So I don't, I don't think it'll. Th- this is for the warrant. I don't think it carries, I mean. I don't know if it carries over into the actual zoning bylaw necessarily. Maybe it does. I don't think it hurts anything, you know, I. Donna sort of said, put it in there and it seems like it's prudent.
No, I understand she said, put it in there, but I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, the way it's in there now, it's just kind of as under definitions. Um, so I mean, I think.
Oh, it's not, it's not intended to be.
Uh, no, I understood, but you know, so I'm just saying, like, you know, what are we gonna do with it? Are we gonna incorporate it into like the, the four point, uh? Is it four point four, the section of for the, you know, ADU conditions?
They're separate. How's that? I don't think we have to incorporate it. I think it's, it's for the whole thing, um.
Yeah, I mean, it's just for the Warner. It's for like the, the AG review, like saying, you know, the severability, you know, if there's something that you can do, it's, you know.
Right. Cause we'll have voted the Warren article and so they'll just say, you know, okay, I mean, she already approved it, so I'm not particularly worried, but. It seems imprudent to take it out at this point.
I'm not saying we should take it out. I just.
No, I know, I know.
Yeah, I just wanna either say, you know, put it up in like the top part maybe with the, you know. With the warrant language or, you know, put it in a section of the bylaw, so it's clear like where it would go if it goes in the bylaw. You know what I mean? It just, uh, it seems, uh. But, um.
How's that?
That's perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome. That was easy.
Yep. So I thi- I think we're, uh, pretty good, um. You know, I wa- I was gonna suggest, you know, that we, uh. You know, kind of, um, basically use the, the same language and, and just, uh, put some things in there, like I've said to you, Michael, um, to kind of say, uh. You know, section, you know, four point four, uh, you know, or the, you know, first paragraph of section four point four is gonna be replaced with. You know, this following language.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like that kinda thing? And we'll do that now. We can do that offline, but that was, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think either we can, I don't know what's, we can either.
Well, let's, let's just talk a little bit of process in terms of, uh, you know, next steps to, you know, finalize the language of this, uh, for town meeting. Um, I know town meeting is moved to May thirty first, so maybe we should just have the rest of this discussion in our May meeting.
I think so. I mean, now that we, if, if we can close the hearing, the close the hearing doesn't mean that we can't. Discuss the edits for town, creating the warrant. That's, we're okay with that, so.
We're closing the hearing only means that we can't, you know, receive any additional, uh.
Right.
The only, the only, uh, you know, thing that we can incorporate into our changes, other than what we've heard here today, would be, uh, legal counsel.
Yeah, but we can just, when we close the hearing, we can discuss the process and all that kinda stuff, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, just to summarize for everybody else, there's like, what Nathan had suggested is. I only put the change, like, there's in four point four about housing options, there's like maybe two paragraphs and there's only one that we're changing. So what we wanna make sure we do is it doesn't get interpreted that we're substituting two paragraphs with one paragraph. We just wanna be very specific that.
And it's just kinda tightening up what the changes are to, so that it's, you know. You know, kind of like, you know, when you, when you read like, uh, the amendments of, uh, you know, the state law, they say, you know, like. You know, this, the following language will be inserted after paragraph four, or, you know, the. You know, this section is gonna be replaced with this language or whatever it is, right? So it's just, you know, explicitly clear what language in the bylaw is changing and how, and there's no. Clear what language in the bylaw is changing and how, and there's no room for any kind of, uh. Misinterpretation of it. Okay, uh, and I, I guess just with, with respect to timing, um. I know, we've notified the select board that we have these warrants, but the language is not gonna, do, do we know when the language is, uh, gonna be finalized? With the select board, I, I know I see Melissa's here from the select board, um, looks like Rita jumped off.
Yeah, I can, I, I talked to Brennan today, and he's incorporating the warrant articles for the select board. Maybe. Tomorrow's, tomorrow's meeting or the subsequent meeting, um, so they. They received our three warrants, they had, you know, and. They don't have to do anything with them except to. Accept them, look at them, and move them back to us, so they don't even, they don't even vote, but, um. It's, I think it's on the agenda for tomorrow, and if not, in two weeks from now, and maybe Melissa does know.
Well, yeah, I guess why I'm, why I'm getting at is the, the final language of the warrant, you know.
We can, we can change the final warrant much closer.
But it would be after our May meeting?
I can.
Go, Melissa, jump right in.
Yeah.
Hi, um, now, you're, you're, you're on the right path, Michael, um, I think we're just looking at a draft or whatever we have put together so far. Uh, tomorrow night, and then we'll look at it each subsequent, um, select board meeting if there's made, if there's a. Subs- if there's substantial changes or additions, um. When does it have to be finalized? I think beginning of May is usually because of we're at the end of. Um, May is town meeting, so at least by the first week, we'll probably want some sort of. Final draft, um, before we print, um. The select board will probably have an additional meeting, probably just to look at that, is my guess.
So.
Schedule that we've had.
I think we can, if, if you want, we can vote on these three, um, with the caveat that we add the clarifying language about. What's, you know, what's, what paragraph's getting amended, but not, not changing the language. We should do each one separately.
Okay, um, yeah, would, would you like to, uh, make a motion that, uh, we, uh, put forward the, uh? Proposed amendment that would remove, um, the rated development.
So moved.
Second?
Aye, second.
Alright, any discussion? I'll, I'll call the roll.
Um, are, is, is this to be closed the hearing first, or is this for a part of the hearing?
Um, it, it, it doesn't matter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll call, we'll close it, yeah, I mean, you know, we could close the hearing first, but we can do this and then close the hearing, that's fine. I, I, you know, I mean, it's, yeah, we, we have the motion on the table, we'll, we'll go with this, um. Uh, Raymond.
Aye.
Pycroft? Bonner?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
DeKara?
Aye.
And I'm an eye. Uh, motion passes unanimously.
I think Robert should make the motion for the tiny houses.
Yes, yeah, Robert, would you, would you like to make a, a motion that the, uh, planning board will, uh?
So moved.
Oh, huh, let me. Yeah, uh. Would you like to make a motion that, you know, the planning board, uh, put forward a, uh, warrant article, um, re- relating to, uh. Adding tiny houses to the bylaw, um, with any necessary, uh, tweaks that we need to make, uh, just to. Make sure the language is, is clear and concise.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, I'll call the roll, uh. Bonner?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
DeKara?
Aye.
Pycroft?
Aye.
And Raymond?
Aye.
And I'm an eye, motion, motion passes unanimously. Uh, Michael, would you like to make a motion that we, uh, put forward as a warrant article, the proposed amendments for, uh? Accessory dwelling units incorporating the, uh, changes, uh, you know, we made today and any, uh. Um, clarifying, uh, changes that are needed. As such.
Yes, including punctuation and typos that would be subsequently provided by Tom. Yeah, I'm so moved.
Thank you. Second? Anyone?
Second.
Alright, Raymond seconds, and any discussion? Uh, let's note that, yeah, uh, uh, we will, uh, make sure that Tom gets a look at that for, uh, grammatical purposes. And, uh, I'll call the roll, um, Raymond?
Aye.
Pycroft?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
DeKara?
Aye.
Bonner?
Aye.
I'm an eye, uh, motion passes unanimously, um. I think we're okay to close the hearing now, uh, do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion? Very good, I'll call the roll. Raymond?
Aye.
Pycroft?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
DeKara?
Aye.
Bonner?
Aye.
And I, I'm an eye, motion passes unanimously, the, uh, public hearing, uh, of the Shrewsbury Select Board. To review proposed zoning by law amendments, it's hereby closed, and move on to our next agenda item. I'd like to extend my thanks to all the members of the public who came tonight, listened and provided comment. It's very much appreciated to have this, uh. Community engagement, I appreciate that.
Hey Nathan, before I do the next thing, can I just say one thing since we didn't have public comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to acknowledge Robert's service on the planning board, because this is his last public open meeting since. Down election is April twenty-sixth, and he will be relieved of duty. After that, so, um, you know, hopefully we'll, we're gonna see him on Wednesday when we have executive session, but there's. Executive session, we don't get to publicly say thank you, so thank you, Robert.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Michael, and thank you, Walt.
Thank you, Robert. Alright. Now, um. That's good, yeah, that did. Well, yeah, okay, um, do we have, uh? Michael, would you like to put up on the screen the, uh, draft, uh? Decision for Sirius?
You asked so nicely, of course. This is our new special permit template.
Yeah, I noticed that, it's nice.
Do you want to walk through it, Nathan? Do you want me to?
Um, yeah, I mean, what, yeah, if you, if you don't mind, I mean, I can, uh.
So I, I sent it out this weekend, so hopefully everyone got a chance to look at it. Um, you know, the first part is the findings, um, and. The thing that is different from. Past special permits is that this and the, and the last special permit we did are coming under the. Expanded special permit criteria that we, we passed last town meeting. So there's four general findings and a whole bunch of specifics findings, which is why we created this template, so. The general findings are these bold, um. That the proposed uses in harmony with the general purpose intended, the bylaw. That the proposed use does not significantly increase risk to public health, welfare and safety for residents. That the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its adverse effects with respect to the town, which may. Include but is not limited to financial, legal, environmental concerns. And the proposed use is consistent with the Shrewsbury master plan, and in particular. Thinking we might want to get rid of that one, and in particular, the goal is established for natural resources and open space. So for these general findings, um, based on the conversations, um. Basically that they were, they were consistent, there was no issues, um, with these four, so. I mean, I can, you want to just, we, see if people are okay with that before moving on to the specific ones, Nathan?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, uh. You know, so, yeah, that, that's, uh, does anyone have any, anything they want to add here?
Okay, so I'll move on to specific ones, there's, you know, there's a whole bunch, but some of these are straightforward, so the first specific finding is. It's consistent with the purposes and requirements of the applicable land use district, overlay districts and other specific provisions of this bylaw. Um, so. It's, it seemed like based on what we heard during the hearing, that we would find that the project sufficiently meets this criteria. Um, so I guess we should just, maybe we'll just check in on each one of these as we go on, if someone has an objection, Tom?
Thanks, um, it's, I'm sorry, it's just vocabulary, but this criteria just is odd for me, because, um, criteria is a plural. And I didn't know if you wanted to maybe use, meets these criteria or meets this requirement.
How's that? The criteria?
That's a great word.
Okay.
Thank you, but it comes up multiple times on this part of the document, just wanted to say, thank you.
Yeah.
The singular criteria is criterion.
Right, and that's so awkward to put in writing. But I think the criteria is perfect, thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, so the second one is, uh, the project is compatible with surrounding uses, if any, and protective of the natural, historic and scenic resources of the town. So, it seemed like there, it wasn't impinging upon the surrounding uses, um, and it was protective. It wasn't that it was not. It's not that it's actively protective, but it's not doing anything that's unprotected, um, so are people good with that? That determination, that finding? Seeing none. Um, the third one is. Is accessible and serviceable by fire, police and emergency vehicles, and what we heard was that there was a wood road. Woods road from Baker Road going to the parcel that leads up to the turbine, so it's wide enough to get, you know. Equipment up there, so it should be wide enough for emergency vehicles is the understanding, and I think. Actually, that was spoken to at the, at the hearing. Um, so. Uh, let's see, the fourth one is will not adversely affect the availability of public services. And the capacity of municipal services, including creating a situation whereby the town is responsible for services it cannot practically or financially provide. Um, this does not seem to be an issue either with this one, um. The fifth one is will not create excessive off premises noise, dust, odor or glare during construction, operation or use. And we might want to just circle back to this, because this is the discussion point, but I think this is where a lot of the. Discussion from the hearing came up, so maybe we'll just put a pin in this and come back, um, if that's okay, Nathan?
Yeah.
Okay, um, six is will not unnecessarily damage the visual advantage of the site and is in harmony with the landscape type. Um, it's set back within the parcel and is not visible to a butters, so it seems like that one is met as well. Um. Will not cause traffic congestion, impaired veh- vehicular or pedestrian safety or physically compromised existing roads considering their current with servicing condition. Um, again, it's sort of set back on the parcel, so it's not really relevant and therefore meets the criteria. Um. Will not overload or risk the integrity or function of any municipal facility or any public or private water sewage disposal or drainage system. Um, again, it's sort of within the parcel and not really impacting any other of these. Systems, you know, it's just based within the parameters of Sirius, I think that meets the criteria, um. Will not create an unreasonable risk of fire endangering residents, municipal buildings or natural resources, um. Since it's a wind turbine, I, we don't think it's gonna catch on fire, so I think that meets that criteria. Um, will not create unreasonable risk of substantial financial or legal liability to the town. Due to regular operations or malfunctions regarding the use, um, I think it meets this criteria, if it stops malfunctioning, it. Doesn't impact the town at all, um. Uh, so it meets that criteria, number eleven, will not create unacceptable risk to the public health, safety and welfare of residents. Um, I think this is, we can put a pin in this one, but again, it sort of loops back to the, the, the noise issue that we discussed. Um, twelve has a whole bunch of subsections, most of which are met, I think. Will not cause significant negative environmental impacts due to flooding, wetlands, loss habitat or ecosystem disturbance, groundwater disturbance or disturbance to forested lands. Including but not, not limited to pollution of surface water or groundwater, so it won't really affect those, um. So I think it meets that criteria. Uh, inadequate water supply to meet unant- anticipated demand of the proposed activity or use of reduction of water supply. It doesn't really affect the water supply, so it should meet that criteria. Destruction or damage of important wildlife species, wetlands, streams, lakes or forest ecology, um. It's really sort of got a small footprint, you know, we talked about birds, but that was the extent of it, um, so probably meets that criteria. Air pollution, uh. It doesn't create any air pollution, so that meets that criteria. Unnecessary decreases agricultural forestry use or potential land productivity. Um, it doesn't really change either of those, so it meets that criteria. Uh, significant reduction of carbon sequestration, sequestration or carbon storage capacity, um. I don't think there's even any clearing happening, but it's not significant, um, so it meets that's a criteria. And then erosion resulting from or caused by development, um, it's pretty minimal footprint, so, um. It doesn't seem like it would be creating erosion, so there's really two sound related things, and. I just, I'll roll into conditions, and then we can sort of, well, here, we want to go back to the findings, the findings basically were for. Noise that at the public hearing, multiple butters residing on Baker Road complained about noise from the previously installed wind turbine. Which is similarly situated on the parcel, while the technology of the old turbine will differ from the proposed turbine. Residents requested assurances that the installation of the proposed turbine would not result in notable noise pollution impacting their quality of life. It was noted that residents on Baker Road did not universally hear noise from. The previous turbine, it was primarily experienced by residents on the east side of Baker Road Hill. Applicant was not able to pinpoint the source of the noise from the previous turbine, uh, turbine. And was confident that the new technology would not create a similar situation for a butter, so does that feel like a? Good reflection of what we heard? Tom?
Um, just for the second sentence here, maybe we could switch it to. While the technology of the proposed turbine will differ from the previous turbine.
Okay.
Because the will differs for the proposed turbine, I think. Uh, the.
Good catch there?
The while the technology of the proposed turbine will differ from the previous turbine. Because you keep using previous instead of old after that.
Okay. How's that? Okay, cool.
Well, do we want to say previous instead of old, as he's saying?
Sure.
Previous turbine?
Oops. Like, is there other old ones that show up, or is that the only one?
I think that was the only one.
I'll do a search on my copy.
Okay. Cool. Um.
You do have older, it just right above in the background, excessive noise from an older wind turbine, maybe from a previous wind turbine. You just scroll down to, uh, the background and the conditions.
Oh, oh, later on.
Yeah, well, hold, hold that, I just wanted to note on.
Oh, is that later on, sorry?
No, it's alright, it's alright, um, it is later on, but the, uh, the, uh, you can scroll down to that last condition you had, Michael.
Uh, in the, in the condition section?
I'm sorry, the last, uh, finding. Last specific finding, I think. Uh, yeah, erosion.
Um, yeah, okay.
We might just say, uh, you know, uh. The foundation is already, uh, built. If, if we want to, yeah, that kind of just.
Yep, how's that?
Beautiful.
Um, so moving to conditions, which is sort of the stuff we have to agree upon, um. Basically, the first paragraph is. Taking in the fact that we heard reports from the butters, we also had, you know, the technical. We also had, you know, the technical expertise provided by the applicant. That, you know, that there was noise experienced, it was from the previous wind turbine. And that, you know, what it was, what we were told was that the new wind turbine, turbine, we'll say the proposed wind turbine is, is a different and more modern model and therefore designed to be quieter. The things that I think the basis for this is that there's two regulatory schemes that are in place. So the state has, um, a noise, noise compliance code. And then the town also has noise regulations, and so I cited these here. The state noise criteria is three ten C M R seven dot ten. Now, I can just read it, it says the sound of source would be considered to be violating the department's noise regulation if the source one increases the broadband level by more than ten, um, decimals above ambient or produces a pure tone condition with an octave band center frequency, blah, blah, blah. Um, these criteria are measured both at the property line and at the nearest inhabited residence. And then the town noise criteria, which was passed in nineteen eighty nine, says no person shall create, assist in creating, continue or allow to continue any excessive unnecessary unusually loud noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures or endangers the reasonable quiet comfort, repose, health or safety of others with the town of Chutesbury. Um, and then it goes on to say that, um, uh, it doesn't actually say right there, I mean, maybe I didn't copy it. Um, but there's reference to the Board of Health and the Police Department for Chutesbury and the D E P for the state in terms of the enforcement. So what we're, well, is written here as a proposal is that if the Chutesbury Police or the Board of Health, um, in consultation with the state D P, if necessary, determines that the, the wind turbine is violating either noise regulation, the state or the local, um, they'll notify the owner who will suspend operation of the turbine within three days of being notified. Operation of the wind turbine will not resume until modifications or repair are made that bring the device into compliance with the applicable regulations and documentation of compliance. I feel like we missed, I just lost something, Nathan, because we had talked about um, being, if people, uh, here we go, it's up here, I'm sorry. This is the, this is the part that I think we have to discuss. The condition shall be enforced by the Chutesbury Police Department or Chutesbury Board of Health upon two separate formal complaints from a Chutesbury resident over the course of not less than one week that noise generated by the wind turbine is likely to be in violation of either the state or the, um, the town. So I think the rationale which we want to discuss is there are, there are these two things in place, the state regulation and the town regulation. And it seemed like if people feel like there is noise, it's coming, that they can report it um, to the police or the Chutesbury Board of Health. There needs to be two complaints and like they can't be, you know, within hours of each other, they have to be over at least a week. You know, so, because it sounded like it, it could have been environmental, you know, that at certain conditions that maybe it's a fluke thing. You hear it one day and then you don't hear it again. Um, so I think that's Nathan and I and Keith sort of took turns writing this up. So collectively, it seemed like, how do we get to the fact that people can share that there's noise, do it in a reasonable way, taking into account that there might be a fluke every once in a while. And that then there's recourse, because I think what we heard was that people want to know that if, if this gets approved, that they have the ability to get it stopped and fixed, uh, rather than just sort of operating. So for the board, is, people have thoughts about how we're approaching this? Is there, is there a better way to do it? Does this seem to work? Tom? Nathan, you can run the show, I was just reading that document.
No, no, you're, you're doing great, um.
Okay.
Um, I want to address what you just said or asked about, but can we quickly look at number two here?
The comply, right above it?
Yeah, um, it's just the little phrase and local. According to the Chutesbury zoning bylaw, there's, or in the Chutesbury bylaw, it doesn't mention local. So I thought maybe we should just say compliance with state noise regulations. And the town of Chutesbury excessive noise bylaw, because the town of Chutesbury zoning doesn't mention the local regulation.
Okay, that works.
For the next paragraph, um, I guess I'll mention it now, I'll just go in the order, and I'm not forgetting your question about, um, the two complaint mechanism. Um, I will get to it, but the Board of Health, I don't read that in the excessive noise bylaw, I read the select board from the nineteen ninety, um, sorry, nineteen eighty nine.
Chutesbury Select Board.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm surprised I got that wrong, okay.
I'll, I'll just read it for you, enforcing any police officer or constable with jurisdiction, select board, dog officer. So those are named in the law. Um, so I think you probably want select board there, I don't know if we have to get that. And there, uh, so, um, then when you say town noise criteria, um, the word criteria is not in the town bylaw, whereas it is in the D E P noise policy that you quoted. Um, in the town excessive noise bylaw, this is under the portion called prohibition of excessive noise, so I think it might be better called prohibitions. Town noise prohibitions or just something like that. To be in line with the wording there. Um, in the next paragraph after the italics, if the Chutesbury Police Department or Select Board, thank you, instead of Board of Health, um, or mass D E P, correct? Because they, yes, the determination, okay. Or state D E P, um, but that makes it a little awkward, because, or take that out for a moment and let's go back to the way it was, and I'll make my first suggestion. So if the Chutesbury Police Department or Select Board in consultation with the state D E P as necessary, I would say, instead of if necessary.
Okay.
Because, um, you're implying that they might not have to. Uh, but this still leaves open the, um, so it's almost as if it should be going down from the hierarchy. If the mass D E P or if the Chutesbury Police Department or Board of Health in consultation with the D E P as necessary determines that, because there is a possibility that the mass D E P alone would make any sort of determination on here without actually involving the Chutesbury Police Department or Select Board.
Okay, well, yes, just a, in terms of punctuation here.
If the mass D E P, comma, or uh, the, or if the Chutesbury Police Department or Board of Health, comma, in consultation with the mass D E P, comma, as necessary, comma, determines blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
Um, now, a little further down, the modifications or repairs concerned to me, because, um, it's in this paragraph, but I didn't know that modifications or repairs were going to be the only resolution to getting this into compliance based on the complaints. And I just wanted to flag that, um, what if it was because of some weird event outside of control that modifications or repairs could address? Um, what if it was an environmental thing? So I, I don't know, operation of the wind turbine will not resume until modifications or repairs are made into compliance, how about just operation of the wind turbine will not resume until the device is in compliance with the applicable regulations? And not say how it's going to get into compliance? Because it, I just don't know, there might be another thing that's not a modification or a repair that gets it integrated.
What do you think about saying until modification repairs are made if necessary? Because it's environmental, they're not necessary.
Okay. I don't know if you want as or if necessary, I, I don't know why as sometimes works better for me. Um, and then, um, going down to the next sentence, I might, oh yeah, the noise needs an S instead of a C. The excessive noise.
Oh, noise. Oh, got it.
Yeah.
Got it.
Now, um, to your question of whether two separate formal complaints made more than a week from apart, a week apart from each other, I just worry that it could be a weaponizing of complaints. And I wondered if something like formal substantiated complaints or if under, or two violations and, um, do they have to come from the Chutesbury resident, you know? Um, I just worried about, uh, you know, this, people could just make complaints and cause a disruption theoretically.
Yeah, one thing I thought about, just for everyone, I think, you know, ponder in addition to that, those points is that I was thinking maybe you would have, originally I thought, well, it could be three complaints, but by at least two people, so it's not just one person who's feeling annoyed. Um, you know, so there's some legitimacy to, if one person is highly sensitive, but no one else is really being affected, it sort of requires a little bit more broad engagement. Um, but I think, I think you're, you're tapped into the issue, which is that you don't want to disempower people, but you also don't want to have it so that, um, I hate that word weaponization, given the political climate, but, um, misuse or abuse of the, the mechanism. So open to thoughts to people of like, how do we, how do we make it so residents can register their concern and actually trigger responses appropriate while not triggering something that is just because they don't like it? Or they're highly sensitive to it?
Could I make a suggestion?
Um, sure. I, I do want to say just, I don't want to get too much into the, well, you know, actually, I think, having gone to this recent workshop, I think you shouldn't. I think that the board's always supposed to do it, so I apologize because you bring expertise to it, so.
No, it wasn't about that.
Okay. Go ahead. Oh, we were, we were, I, I specifically went to a workshop a few weeks ago about doing defensible, um, decisions, and the idea was that the hearing is closed, and so we shouldn't take input from people who are not on the board. At this point, it's really for the board to decide, otherwise we open ourselves up for, um, possible legal action and critique, so I apologize, because I know that you have both experiential and professional expertise to bring to the, the discussion. So the rest of us laypeople who just have good reasonable brains, any thoughts?
Good night.
We can say we like it too, I mean, we could acknowledge Tom's concerns and still say we like it, so that's an option if we wanted to go that way too.
As, have you run it by any counsel whether two is a reasonable um, condition over that amount of time? I, when I read it, I wonder.
Share with honor, no.
Or just another legal advisor, but, um, I wondered about, um, uh, whether the, um, in the part lower, whether the Chutesbury Police Department or Select Board would be able to determine that the wind turbine is violating, um, anything, like I, I don't know what position they're in to to have a, a system for doing that. Let me just be radical here, I wondered about just leaving number two as one sentence, the very first sentence. Um, and then the very last sentence, it is further noted. But everything in between perhaps leaving out, because theoretically, they could be out of compliance or a person could be with one substantiated complaint. Um, and if we just left the first sentence there, we're just asking for compliance.
I'm just a little confused, just, uh, what do you want to remove?
What if for number two here, we just kept the first sentence and the last sentence?
The number two being this condition? Compliance with state regulations, blah, 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 leave it, so after the enacted nineteen eighty nine period?
Right, then jump all the way to it is further noted that there may be financial penalties if they, um, per the Chutesbury excessive noise bylaw, failure to comply. And not get so specific about the, um, the, the nature of the lack of compliance or, you know, with the two complaints, because again, it could be one. And the way it's worded here opens it up to frivolous complaints. The state noise criteria and the town noise prohibitions, those are already written, they're referenceable. Um, so they're just, you know, they're, they are redundant technically to what's available for the person to know.
Well, can I jump in there for a sec, Tom?
Yeah. I mean, I don't mind leaving those in, actually, I guess I would more say, what about leaving out the, with the, the two complaint part and then the, um, the two sentence paragraph about the, uh, police and the planning board and the modifications of repairs and whatnot.
I'm just going to move it down so it consolidates, um. So I would like to keep the references in, because like.
Yeah, I actually get that, that's nice to have those available.
Yeah, I think, you know, in terms of the, the, the trigger action, if there's nothing in there, it, it, you've can create a situation where someone's frustrated and trying to figure out how they, they do something and there's no guidance on how to do anything. So, because so it seems like the, the thing that we have to grapple with is what's, what's a reasonable trigger action? And you're, I think that's the core of it, but someone needs guidance, and so like the police have to say, I can't do anything unless I get calls from two different residences, you know, and they can't be in the, you know.
Well, can, can I just, the police are not going to look at our decision and say whether or not they got, you know, if, if, if people are calling the police to report a noise violation, then the police are going to decide whether or not they're going to issue a, uh, penalty, which is, you know, a fine of twenty five dollars for each second and subsequent, uh, subsequent offense, right? Uh, with, you know, well, you know, the language that's in our bylaw there. And as far as, you know, if it goes through the, uh, state D E P, uh, how, how would it? How, how, how would it get to the state D E P?
They'll make a phone call.
Someone, someone calls mass D E P and says, hey, there's a noise violation.
Yeah, you do a Google, a Google search and you find out that in fact, there's a state noise regulation and D E P is the person, the entity that's responsible, so.
Um, so I mean, you know, under, uh, like in the sections where you have kind of what the criteria are or what the, you know.
Restrictions are, yeah.
You know, you can, you can also indicate there, you know, um, you know, it's in, you know, with the town of Chutesbury bylaws enforced by the police, constable, uh, select board, et cetera, with state noise criteria that's, that's enforced, uh, enforced by, you know, mass D E P. And, uh, so that way it's, it kind of says how it's enforced.
Up on top, you think?
Um, no, in, in the, uh,
Or they're down here.
Under the, yeah, criteria or, you know, town noise prohibitions, right?
And where's the third one? The, the dog officer or the constable?
Well, yeah, it's like Chutesbury Police or, you know, authorized, kind of, you can just say, uh, enforced by the Chutesbury Police Select Board or Dog Constable, I guess, that would probably do it. And that would, you know, dog officer, I said dog.
Dog officer.
I don't know why they're, I guess, go to barking. That's why.
Ashley, um, can I say something?
Please.
Please.
I'm wondering, is there any, any like method or vehicle for corroboration of the complaints? Like, could the police or the select board or whatever follow up and write a report? Could the police or the select board or whatever follow up and write a report? Or like, how is it considered? Like, is it just automatically if someone complains twice? And not less than a week, boom, it shut down. That's how I'm reading it.
Well, you know, so there's some questions on this, Ashley, that's, uh, you know, um. So say, uh, you know, uh. You know, in one month of the, you know, January, there's, uh, someone calls and says, hey, you know, that's, the turbine is loud and the chief decides to issue a citation. Um, that's number one. And then, then, you know, March, it happens again, someone else, they. Do it this time, they get a twenty-five dollar fine, but it was just a windy night and, you know, the next day it's not happening, right? So it's okay. Um, that's over. And then maybe a couple of months later, there's another windstorm and someone else calls, they go over, issue another, uh, citation. You know, at what point is, is, is there a, a trigger to say that it's, um. Has to be shut down, right? Cuz, cuz are we expecting that the chief is gonna read this decision and kind of keep notes about how many people have complained about this turbine or, uh?
Someone on Baker Road will have a copy of this, and when the police come over, they'll say, look.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it's, uh, we're doing it because we want to try and protect people who are gonna be genuinely. Potentially affected and don't want to have their quality of life. Lessened in their home for this, right? But like, in the situation that you're bringing up, Nathan. It's shut down and it might just be because, you know, when it's. A particular velocity of wind, everybody hears it or something. I don't know for a little bit, not saying that's gonna happen, but.
No, the situation I'm bringing up, it's not shut down. They're just getting citations and then no one's forcing them to shut it down.
Right, because you're saying it never, like, did the police know about this? And do they follow through that and tell us? Yeah.
I, I don't think that we can compel the police to, you know, enforce our, uh. You know, special permit hearing, you know, on the fly, you know, I think it would require. Someone to. Petition for zoning enforcement, um, and that, that could be maybe to us or the zoning board of appeals or the building inspector.
So how about this, based on that, just started jumping, Nathan, but maybe it's. Rather than trying to quantify it. If we say that, you know. If Mass C E P or the police or the select board, um. Determine that there were violations and therefore fines, um, a resident can approach this, the. Planning board, um, if there's a pattern of noise, so a pattern. Can be, you know, short term. Something or other where they could say, you know, it's just all the time it's happening, but. Um, you know, if it's just a windy day every three night, you know, every three months. I don't think someone would come to the planning board and complain. But they could, but, you know, then it'd be up to us to sort of evaluate, cuz I think your point's right on that. We're the only ones who are gonna take it seriously and it was our special permit. So it seems like we're the body that makes the evaluation and maybe a pattern or some, some word like that. Gets to it as opposed to sort of a numerical trigger. Tom, is your hand still up from before or is it a new? And you're muted.
It is a new, is it okay to step in right now?
Yeah, I interrupted Nathan, you, you could jump in.
Let me gather my thought. I know one of my thoughts started with. Maybe it's the complaint as opposed to, and when Nathan used the word citation, I was like, that's the word I think that I would prefer there, some sort of. Settlement about whether the complaint was real, like with this rotation, so like upon a certain number of citations, maybe. But what if we left out that whole sentence where it says the two separate formal complaints? Like imagine the document just not having that. And if you just, you know, kept everything else. You would still have the, um. You know, kind of, for lack of a better word, warning. Um, that if the police or the authorities determine that the wind turbine is violating either noise regulation, they will notify the owner. That might be via a citation, or maybe they will notify them in a different way. And I think it's in here, maybe that we have to say something about, you know. If they, maybe if this is worded in a way, like if the, if the authorities determine that there's a violation. Resulting in a citation. Um, the owner will suspend operation of the wind turbine. Um, but again, I don't know if you want to do it after one citation. And I don't know what the mechanism would be for, how would the planning board know? That the, um. Authorities had cited. Or given a citation to. So. I'm very, I, I, I worry that here we're kind of defining how the legal process would go. Rather than just leaving it more bare bones, like, I have to comply with these laws, here's what they are. These are the people who enforce them.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, if we take out that, that little paragraph, I think it, it gets there. And it strikes me just now, now that I. I'm reminded it's the select board and I see Melissa's still here. I mean, Melissa, it feels like this is a version of a dog here. You know, the least favorite thing for the select board, but. Well, I mean. If there is a noise complaint from barking, it's really no different from a noise complaint for a wind turbine. Do you have any thoughts on that?
You were as, you were asking me, right?
I was.
Okay, um, do I have thoughts on that, um? The general, hold on, let me just pause the. My, my, uh, earbuds, um, battery went. And so, um, so, uh. No, 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 I think you, um. I think you're, I think you're right, the noise complaint and dog complaint would, would be the same, similar.
And you would just, like, you'd end up having a hearing where. The complaining party would say, it's noisy all the time. And then the turbine owner would say. This is why it's noisy and it's not always noisy. And then you guys would come up with the like, how do we deal with this? So it. Comes up with the, some negotiated system and so the. It, the planning board's not part of it, it's the select board who becomes sort of the, um, negotiating. Listening body.
We get, we get the noise complaints, right? So you guys wouldn't necessarily get that, um. At your, at your, at your meetings, so. Yeah, I, I do think it's interesting you're including the dog officer though. But I think that's in line with the noise complaint, um, by law. Yeah, it would, it would, it would come to us, right? It'd go probably to the police chief first and then, um, to us or simultaneously.
I think for this, we could probably take the dog officer off, it doesn't really make sense.
Yeah, that's fine, um, but it's, uh.
Well, maybe you should have it on there, you are quoting the, the excessive noise by law, um. Or you can put dog officer when needed. Um, but it wouldn't apply. I, I think you're right, though, my, I think you're right, though, Michael, it, those, those noise complaints come to us. So if we had to bring in the planning board or, or re-recommend it to the planning board, we could do that as well, you know. You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Melissa. And I also want to note the Board of Health is in there because it's noted in the. Regulation, uh, Mass D E P regulation that, you know, pursuant to Mass General Law. Chapter one eleven, section one hundred forty-two B, um, right? And then it says that, uh.
Oh, I knew I didn't make it up.
Yeah, well, right, yeah, yeah. So that's why that was in there. So we should think about putting that back in there, um.
Sorry about that, Michael.
That's all right.
Is that in the C M R, Nathan?
That's, that's in the C M R, yeah. Yeah, it says, uh, under, um, C N, uh, three ten, C M R, seven point fifty-two enforcement provisions. Any police department, fire department, board of health officials or building inspector. Or his designee acting within his jurisdictional areas hereby authorized by the D E P to enforce. As provided in Master General Law, chapter one eleven, section one hundred forty-two B. Any regulation in which specific reference to three ten C M R. Seven point five two is cited. Noise is defined in the regulation as, you know, sounds of sufficient intensity and or duration. As to cause or contribute to a condition of air pollution.
I don't know if you're looking at what I'm looking at, but in my document, that's page four thirty-four and a five ninety-seven, so.
Make, make sure you feel better, you found it too, cuz I, and it was a long time ago when I wrote this thing.
It's like page two out of four and what I'm looking at.
Oh, okay, I have the whole. Yeah, anyway, yeah. Yep, great.
Well, that's cuz it's like Chelmsford, Mass.
I saw that one.
Yeah, it's weird that that comes up with all the towns.
Yeah.
There's a good catch. All right, so, so if, if it goes like that, go, it could go to the select board and the select board could do it, um, you know, so we just add something that, um, you know, the. You know, the public may petition the client, the planning board to evaluate, uh. You know, whether, you know, the. The use is, uh, in violation of, uh. The noise ordinances. Applicable, uh, noise ordinances. You could just kind of at the bottom of everything say, you know, further. You know, the. Shrewsbury Planning Board may act on a request to evaluate the, uh.
I think I would, I would put based on what Melissa was saying, if this, this sent paragraph here about if the Mass D E P. I think what we want to say is that complaints. Noise complaints related to this should be go, should go before the select board. Um, and then say. If the mass D E P, you know, cuz the next thing is about determining if it is. Um, in violation, but the complaint should go to the select board. This, this seems a little wording after this, we could maybe take. Maybe it's if the select board determines the wind turbine is violating either noise regulation.
After any advice they get from any other authority, you mean, potentially? Yeah. Or even if it is determined that.
Yeah.
And don't even put who determines it.
Yeah.
Another thing we, you know, I'll let you finish that, but. So, um.
Is there still anything above there with the two complaint there, or did you remove that? I didn't catch that.
No.
Oh, okay, thank you. I didn't see you delete that.
Um, we could say something that, you know, operation of the wind turbine, um. May continue. Well, you say, you know, will not resume, uh, but you, we might, uh, you know, until modifications or repairs are made. Um, or as applicable. If the, uh, operator determines. A way to automatically, um. Automatically shut down the turbine. You know, when certain weather conditions exist that cause the excessive noise. Which is technically a modification, I suppose, so I, I guess that's not really needed. Yeah, nevermind. Yeah, I mean. I, you know, I think. I think we're okay. Yeah, the, these ordinances are out there and even if, you know, regardless of what we put here, if, if. They violate those ordinances, um, you know, the, the, the town ordinance. Has only monetary, uh, bite to it. But the, uh, the state, uh, stat, you know, regulation, um, I think provides more. More bite, I think, uh, you know, we might need to reference the, um, enforcement, uh, oh, actually, in the bylaw. The bylaw mentions the, um. The state noise ordinance, right?
I can't remember, I, and I.
The town bylaw?
Yeah.
Yes, it does. It does. I remember looking at it and seeing it.
Okay. Does it mention that specific regulation? Cuz that's what the regulation says.
I'll look. It's under the wind turbine part in the bylaw.
Oh, you mean the zoning bylaw or the, um, excessive. I'm sorry, of the zoning. Yeah, they mentioned the state C M R.
My sense based on this conversation is like. This creates an adequate framework for. Being able to go forward with the applicant and also the ability with some clarity as to like, if someone wants. Um, redress who they go to. Uh, which is really what I think people are asking for. Just cuz it's getting late, are people, any other things, this works sufficiently?
Just so you know, it's, it's, uh, eight point eight dash four F. Massachusetts Noise Regulations three ten, C M R, seven point ten is in there.
Maybe, maybe we should add the. The zoning bylaw reference, actually just did at the beginning. Is a three?
It's, uh. Okay, so it's. I don't, it's under, it's in section eight point eight, small wind energy systems. Uh. General requirements, eight point eight dash four, letter F, noise. What do you need? Do you need the mask?
No, that's good.
Okay.
That was perfect.
So, so looking at the state noise. Ordinance, although I'm still on this, uh, Chelmsford thing here, it says. It says, you know, any regulation in which specific reference to three ten, C M R, seven point five two is cited. And this is, so. That's a. That's a separate. C M R from the noise level, which I real, I realize.
Well, just, it's seven point one two, right?
The one in our bylaw?
No, the one he's.
You know, I gotta, I gotta get off this and this Chelmsford business and, and look up the real deal. Does anyone else have the time? Do you have that up?
Uh, the Massachusetts one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I just, uh.
Did you have a question, Nathan, or I didn't quite understand? Did you have a question, Ethan, or I didn't quite understand?
The question is regarding, you know, the enforcement by those officials, um. You know, if there's, if we're, if we're properly there is my concern. So I just want to make sure that we are.
I guess I wonder for the enforcement with the Board of Health, it does say acting within his or her jurisdictional area. As far as police, fire, Board of Health, and I just didn't know it, noise. Though under Board of Health jurisdiction.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's um. You know, that was cited from another C M R, not the actual C M R for noise, you know.
Yeah, I'm looking at the mass C M R for noise. It, it read exactly how you read the one from Chelmsford. But I, I don't know if the Chelmsford one includes the phrase acting within his or her jurisdictional area.
I think that's geographic.
Okay.
So we, we can't go into Everett and have the Schuetsberg.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think it's fine. Um.
Yeah. I think.
Yeah, it should be all right. Um.
Will I take votes?
Yeah, yeah. Does anyone else uh have anything they want to do? Or should we uh, should we hear a motion to uh uh, to approve this uh special permit with the uh decision as uh, as we have just reviewed?
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second.
All right. Now, uh. I'm gonna uh call the roll. Um. Take care.
Hi.
Uh Weston. Seaford.
Hi.
Um, let's see, uh, Bonner.
Hi.
And I'm an eye. That's five, that's.
Ashley. And Robert.
It's recused.
Oh.
And uh, R, R, Robert's off, but I think that's five. That's what, that's all we need.
Robert's there.
Robert's also recused.
Oh.
And I think he's hopped off.
No, I'm, I'm on the board, so that's.
Oh, you, oh, you are still here, though. Okay, I'm sure for sound on. But okay, we're good. So we've got our five and uh. Don't forget Murphy.
Now I got Murphy.
One more.
Yeah, okay. So that's good. Um. You know, unfortunately, I'm not going to be in town on Thursday to be able to go and sign this thing, but I can sign it. Uh. I can, you know. If, if Mateo, if you can get this, you know, printed out. I can come into town hall and, and if you leave it somewhere where I can find it, I can uh I can come in on Monday and sign it and uh and bring it to the uh town clerk to uh stamp it and begin the uh, and make, make that final action.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll be in tomorrow too. So I don't know if you make it in tomorrow, but.
You'll, you'll be in uh tomorrow? I, I won't, I won't, I won't be able to make it in tomorrow.
Okay. Um, yeah, no, I, I'll, I'll leave the original for you in the um planning board's mailbox.
Perfect.
I'll send this to you.
And, you know, for uh, for Linda and uh Rick. You know, the uh the timing will be that, you know. Presuming I get down there on Monday and, and make the final action, which is the clerk stamping it. Um, you know, what the result in you being sent a copy of the decision, um, a few other administrative things that needs to be reported. And uh, that will uh begin a twenty day clock where, you know, you can um receive a complaint, uh but the uh you know, at this point, the board is uh voted to approve this decision and will go uh to the town clerk and be stamped on Monday. So.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, um. So that's, that's it. That's, that's done. Um, we have one other, Adam, I, you know, before I get to that, I just want to note, um. Now, last meeting, we had, uh, there was a few uh back and forth between the board and the applicant here on this special permit and uh as Michael alluded it to it today, uh, you know, we want to avoid that. You know, the, you know, we, we were talking about the, the yawing of the thing and asked us some questions, I think mostly related to that. There may have been some other stuff. So what the what the legal ramification of that is, is if we, if we do that, right, and we make a decision um to allow a, a special permit. Uh, you know, in this case where the conversation is with the applicant, right? Um. You know, if there's anyone that can uh claim that they weren't properly noticed about something that uh, you know, made, that was approved by the permit or, you know, something that, that made it into the uh conditions or what have you, right? Then, then that's, you know, that gives them grounds for, for challenging it, right? Uh, you know, I don't think that we did anything that really could rise to that. Uh. I mean, obviously people could uh do, you know. People can sue for anything, but you know, when I, when I got down to uh, when the rubber got to the road, I don't think we were really in danger with anything we did. But just the same, I think it's an opportunity where, you know, we should be mindful of that and careful not to put ourselves in a bad situation uh when we're conducting public hearings. And, and further, uh, as Michael alluded to, right, based on the workshop, uh, you know, what we can do is we can keep the public hearing open, continue it to a date certain and proceed with our deliberation. Uh, uh, and crafting the decision um while the hearing is still open. And then once we all have all that done, they close the hearing and then they have your decision and, and you take your final action. Um, the risk for us there is uh if we are continuing the public hearing, but then we are not actually receiving any new testimony. Um, then even though we haven't closed the hearing, we continue to uh i, i, if we go back and say, you know, after that first time we had the public hearing, whenever the last time we actually received testimony is that could be the start of that administrative ninety day window where the planning board has to make its decision. So then if we're continuing the hearing and we extend past that ninety days. All of a sudden, um, we could have constructive approval. Now that's a, that's a good window there. Um, but it's just something we would need to be mindful of. And uh, but it would allow us to completely avoid this uh situation that, uh, you know, where we, we get ourselves into that um. Uh, that problem of uh receiving testimony after the hearing is closed. So I just wanted to make a note of that, you know, it was uh something that happened, you know, and it was brought to my attention uh subsequently. And I wanted to make sure that we uh were aware and uh, and we have a good path uh going forward to uh, I mean, uh. You know, the, the problem was is that we had this idea that you had to separate the hearing from deliberation. But based on you know, what Michael is sharing with us from his uh experience at the uh.
Citizen planner.
Right, yeah, citizen planner uh event. Uh, it's a perfectly fine practice to do that. Um, so we'll do a little bit more due diligence. You know, I think Jeff Lacy uh was, was someone who uh used to say that about the separation of uh the actual hearing part and then the deciding deliberation part. So we want to just do a little bit more digging on that and make, make sure that the citizen planners aren't leading us astray, but uh barring any uh you know, information that uh Jeff was right all along, and then we got to really stick to that, we'll, we'll move to that process. Um, that's my, that Michael has suggested, okay? So that's.
Are you done with us?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you uh very much. I apologize for uh if I skipped over you, but.
Good night.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, you have any other uh any questions or anything like that about what, what, what's to come, or you can, you can, you have my email, you can reach out to me uh or the board as needed and uh but we'll, we'll be in touch shortly with the uh with that decision for you. That'll be happening very soon.
Thank you.
Like it.
Yeah, there, there's an item on the agenda that deals with a um potential finding of uh the viability of a road. But we're gonna put that off. Um. You know, I don't think that they're not here and uh we're gonna put that off. Um. So with that, I would entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait.
Second.
No, I wasn't motioning. I just, I didn't want to make a point. So.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I want to leave it to the group, but we were going to go into executive session for like a really short heads up about the solar stuff. Um, we are going to discuss it on Wednesday. So for those who didn't see, where's Deacon? Deacon, because I don't know, Deacon, if you know that we're having a executive session on Wednesday around solar stuff, but um five o'clock on Wednesday with the select board, we're having a joint discussion. So we can just leave that and not have even a five minute executive session, or if you guys wanted a five minute executive session to just sort of like get a sense of what it is, we can do that briefly. Either way is fine. Um, but um it seems like Tom and Ashley and Robert and Jeff and me will all be at the joint executive session with the select board. And Nathan will recuse himself as usual. Um, so do you guys want to just adjourn and wait till Wednesday, or do you want like a five minute heads up? Either way is cool. That was, gotta have an opinion.
I, I, I'd move to adjourn unless someone wants to have the five minute session.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn on the tail. Any discussion? Is anyone going to vote this down so they can go into executive session? You can. All right, I'll call the roll. Uh, Pat Croft.
Hi.
Raymond.
Hi.
Weston.
Hi.
Bonner.
Oh.
Take care.
Hi.
And I'm an eye. All right, this meeting of the Schuetsberg Planning Board has been adjourned. Thank you all.
Good day, everybody.
Have a great evening.